Good evening, everyone, and welcome to San Gabriel City Council's special meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, April twenty seven, twenty twenty one. I will call the special meeting to order at six thirty eight P M. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Leo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Pooh.
Here.
Okay, city clerk will start with some announcements, right? You will have some announcement for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Thank you. Tonight is the study section. Well, city clerk will announce what kind of study section is this?
Thank you, mayor. This is the proposed budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the staff presentation.
Thank you. Well, I guess finance director, can you go ahead with your presentation?
Yes, yes, mayor. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the city council. Will Kohola Kula, finance director for the city of San Gabriel. Slide two, please. Tonight we'll be talking about the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two. Annual budget along with capital improvement plan. Tonight's topics will include an overview of the proposed budget. We'll take a look at the general fund. We'll look at the general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, the fund balance of the general fund. We'll also take a look at all funds for the city. Staffing changes that are proposed for this fiscal year. The capital improvement plan that is proposed. We'll take a second look at the fee schedule and then we'll finish it off by looking at the next steps for our budget process. I'd like to let the council know that we have Julia James, our management specialist, and Linda Tang, our assistant finance director, who have spent many hours putting this budget presentation, this budget together. They will also be available for questions. Just checking, was I muted?
No, we can hear you, Will.
Okay, okay. For some reason, my microphone just muted. Next slide, please. So before we get into the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget, we'll do just a quick fiscal review of the current year that will be finishing on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So we began the fiscal year with a general fund deficit of one point five seven million. At this point, we are projecting to end the fiscal year with a general fund surplus of three point nine million, which is an improvement of five point six five million dollars. The economic environment during the fiscal year was impacted by COVID nineteen. However, the city had some major revenue increases in the American Rescue Plan funds, a three point seven five million, along with measure SG. Also, the expenditures for the general fund, the city departments were able to keep them nearly one point eight million dollars below budget. And then as the last fiscal year budget, we were talking about the beginning of the state audit. And now we're talking about the end, nearly the completion of the state audit, which we received the results today. Next slide, please. So in overview of the budget, the total operating budget for the city is eighty eight million, two hundred and three thousand. The general fund comprises fifty percent of the overall operating budget at forty three million, eight hundred and forty thousand, with our special revenue funds at forty three percent, our internal service funds at seven percent. And then we have our capital improvement plan at twenty one point four million for a total city budget of a hundred nine million, hundred thousand. Next slide, please. And we'll talk about the general fund. Slide six, please. So as an overview for the general fund, as you mentioned earlier, in this current fiscal year that we are in, that we are completing, we began with a deficit of one point seven five million, largely because we kept our expenditures below budget and the additional revenue from the American Rescue Plan. We're projecting to end the year with a positive fund balance of three point nine million. Carrying that three point nine million over into the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, with revenues of thirty eight million, seven hundred and seventy six thousand, transfers in for our retirement cost of nine point four million, expenditures of forty three point three million and transfers out of five hundred thousand. We're projecting an ending fund balance in the general fund of eight point two million. One thing we wanted to compare that had we not received the American Rescue Plan funds, our general fund would still have a positive ending fund balance. Obviously, because we're receiving seven million dollars from the American Rescue Plan, it's significantly reduced. But the ending fund balance would still be projected to be around eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So moving on into general fund revenues. Here is a table that provides the major categories of our general fund revenues. For fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, the proposed revenues are forty eight million, one hundred and seventy seven thousand. Couple items I want to point out as far as this revenue table, and we'll talk about more of the highlights in the upcoming slides. But taxes is fifty seven percent of our revenue source and it's projected to be increased by seven percent. But this is And then you can see our intergovernmental is proposed to be higher by five hundred and forty six thousand as compared to the prior year adopted budget. And that's primarily due to the American Rescue Plan funds. Overall, general fund revenues are proposed to be higher by fourteen percent. And one last thing I wanted to point out was between taxes at fifty seven percent of general fund revenues and transfers in from the retirement fund of twenty percent of general fund revenues. Those two revenue sources make up seventy seven percent of the city's general fund revenues. Next slide, please. And so on this slide, we bullet point some of the highlights of the general fund revenues. As I had mentioned, revenues are higher by five point seven million. The American Rescue Plan has been a major boost to the city's general fund for a total amount expected of seven point five million, three point seven five million for fiscal year ending twenty twenty one. And then an additional three point seven five million for fiscal year ending twenty twenty two. Our property tax related revenue continues to remain strong. Measure SG is doing much better than expected. It's a point seven five percent tax and it's trending ninety one percent of the full one percent of our sales tax. Our consumer base revenues of sales tax and transient occupancy taxes continue to be affected by the pandemic and the recovery in economy. Sales tax is budgeted eight percent below the pre-COVID levels and transient occupancy tax is thirty four percent below the pre-COVID levels as well. The pre-COVID level is the fiscal year eighteen nineteen was the last full year we had outside of the pandemic. Slide nine, please. Additional highlights, every other year, the city is able to exchange Prop A funds for unrestricted general fund revenue. This year, we're able, we're proposing to exchange one million worth of Prop A funds for seven hundred fifty thousand dollar boost to the general fund. Some of the proposed fees that were discussed with council back in April first have been incorporated into the revenue projections. And the retirement fund transfer in is four hundred thousand dollars higher this fiscal year than it was last fiscal year. And we'll talk more about what's going on with the retirement fund. And then as we continue to do, staff will monitor the revenues closely and update projections and provide a mid-year, make adjustments at mid-year if needed. Slide ten, please. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Total proposed expenditures for the general fund for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two is forty three million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Personnel is proposed at thirty four million, eight hundred and twenty five thousand. Operating at eight point five million and operating transfers out of four hundred and ninety eight thousand. Overall, expenditures are higher by nearly two point seven million or six point five percent. One other item to point out is that eighty percent of general fund expenditures are personnel costs. And then on the next slide, we'll discuss what's driving up personnel and what's driving down operating costs. Slide eleven, please. So personnel cost is proposed to increase by four point seven million. Workers' compensation insurance has increased by nearly four hundred thousand dollars. A major change this year is the ability to fund all of the full-time positions, including vacancies. And then one change we made this year in the way we present retiree health insurance expense. Previously, it was presented as an operating non-departmental to move it out of non-departmental. We've moved it out of non-departmental and moved it actually into the departments where the expenses applied and moved it up to personnel. So one point five million of the increase is basically just a change in the presentation of retiree retiree healthcare costs from operating, moving it up to personnel. And then on the operation side, the decrease of the operation was the representation of the retiree health insurance, taking it out of operating and moving it in the personnel. The animal control contract was lower and we didn't have any of the cares expenditures budgeted this year. And then in H R, there's the settlement budget is not budgeted in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Transfers out increased slightly due to the Mission Playhouse being budgeted for an additional hundred thousand dollars in transfers to the Mission Playhouse. And there's a transfer to the projects fund to purchase two new fire vehicles. Next slide, please. Next, we take a look at general fund expenditures by department. So we compare the fiscal year twenty twenty one adopted budget versus the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two proposed. On the right-hand side, you'll see the percentage increases and decreases in the departments. The changes that we talked about in the previous slide, the higher workers' comp insurance, the reallocation of the retiree health insurance, the fully funding of full-time position as well as general liability insurance increasing by four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars is impacted within each department at different levels. And on the next slide, we'll kind of explain what's driving the changes for each of these departments. Next slide, please. So to begin with, city council, the only cause for the increase in city council is because of the representation of the retiree health insurance from non-departmental to breaking it out into each department, each department. Administration was the retiree health insurance as well as funding a management analyst position. The city clerk increase was due to an election year and an estimated election cost of eighty five thousand dollars. Finances up because of the representation of the retiree health insurance plus the funding of plus the funding of a full-time position. Human resources, the decrease is due to the settlement not being needed to be budgeted for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. In police, they were impacted by the increase in liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, the representation of the retiree health insurance, the payment due on the new CAD system and funding of additional positions. For fire, the increase is due to the increases in workers' comp, retiree health insurance, as well as the person funded liability. Community development increase is due to the funding of of positions. Public works, there was a decrease in public works due to charging more cost that were normally paid by the general fund, transferring those costs to other funds within the city. And community services, the increase is due to the representation of the retiree health insurance and the addition of an administrative assistant position. Slide fourteen, please. So more general fund highlights, some that have already been mentioned. So the budget assumes no cost of living increases for personnel expenses. There was no budget settlement cost. All positions are fully funded. There was an increase in the police budget partially due to the CAD payment being due on the CAD system. The Mission Playhouse is subsidized, is receiving support from the general fund to the tune of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there was a transfer from the general fund to the special projects fund to make purchases of two new vehicles for the fire department. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk a little bit about the general fund fund balance. As the city council knows, back in May two thousand and eighteen, the city council passed a policy, a fund balance policy to establish a fund balance of seventeen percent by June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. The good news is, as proposed in the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget, because of the American Rescue Plan funds, the general fund will have a fund balance that is over seventeen percent. As you will see on the next slides, when we project out the next five years, that the general fund will have a hard time maintaining that fund balance level through two thousand and twenty eight because of the depletion of the reserves in the retirement fund. So the retirement fund currently is generating about eight point nine million for this fiscal year. Nine point four million was needed to fund retirement costs, which depleted the retirement reserves. So as we move forward in our projections, those additional funds are not going to be available to pay retirement costs in the general fund. And the general fund will have to pick up those additional costs. But we'll see the impact on the next slide when we look at the five-year projection. Slide sixteen, please. So if we look right in the middle of the table, F Y twenty one, twenty two proposed, at the bottom, you'll see a projected fund balance of eight million, two hundred and sixty seven thousand. Total expenditures are the forty three million, eight hundred and forty thousand. That fund balance is at a nineteen percent level. As we So before we move forward, let me just share what the assumptions are in this five-year projection. So it's a basic five-year projection. The revenues are projected to grow steadily. There's no COLAs built in in personnel cost. There's some operating increases for those expenses that we know are going to go up related to the unfunded accrued liability payment and insurance cost. The support for the Mission Playhouse is steady throughout the five-year projection. There's no equipment purchases programmed into the five-year projection. But it does take into consideration the increased burden on the general fund to pay for retirement costs. So moving back to the table, as a fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, at a fund balance level of eight million, two hundred and sixty seven thousand, we're at a nineteen percent fund balance level. And as we continue to move forward to the next year, twenty two, twenty three, fund balance increases a little bit, it's still at nineteen percent. Twenty three, twenty four, fund balance continues to increase and it's still at nineteen percent of general fund expenditures. Twenty four, twenty five, fund balance begins to decrease as expenditures increase revenues. And now the fund balance is at a seventeen percent level. And as we move into the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year, fund balance continues to decrease to a seven point five million dollar level and that is a fifteen percent. That is a fifteen percent level. So seeing how the general fund is going to project for the next five years, as the council has already been discussing, solutions need to be, will be developed to address the growing pension liability and the depleting retirement, the depleting and lower availability of the retirement funds. Next slide, please. So next we'll move into all other funds of the city. Next slide, please. So we'll begin with the internal service funds. The city maintains two internal service fund, a fleet services fund, a risk management fund. The purpose of internal service funds is to provide services and charge those services to the other city departments. The fleet services fund operate, performs vehicle maintenance and risk management manages the insurance cost to mitigate risk. Overall, the the fleet services fund is lower by five percent and ninety six percent is paid for by the general fund. The risk management fund is higher by twenty five percent due to the increase in liability costs and the workers' comp cost. And the general fund pays eighty five percent of those costs. Next slide, please. And then here are just some highlights of the internal service fund. Explaining what was the cause of the decreases in the fleet management, the fleet services and the risk management fund that we have already mentioned. Slide twenty, please. Next, we'll move on to the special revenue funds. The city maintains twenty five special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are used to account for resources that need to be used for a specific purpose. One specific purpose is transportation. There's various funds that provide funding for transportation. The total budget for the restricted purpose of transportation is twelve point seven million. Public safety restricted funds, two hundred thousand. Funds specific for community services for the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, two point eight million. Utilities such as sewer, street lighting, stormwater and waste management, nine point one million. And then we have And then we have other special revenue funds, the largest being the retirement fund, which has a proposed budget of nine point four million. In the total for the other special revenue funds, it's twelve point eight million with a total special revenue fund proposed budget of thirty-seven point eight million. Next slide, please. And then here are just some highlights of the special revenue funds. As we've discussed, the retirement fund pays for the annual retirement obligations for, that are paid through the general fund. The total transfer is nine point four million. Coming from the retirement to the general fund, eight point nine million is generated from the, the annual revenue and then five hundred from reserves, which will. Deplete the reserves in the retirement fund. The measure our funding, it includes five point two million from formerly earmarked. Funds for the seven-ten corridor, which we use for traffic improvements along Valley Boulevard. And then prop A funds, which we discussed earlier, is a one million dollar exchange for unrestricted. General fund, general fund revenue, the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Slide twenty-two, please. Another special revenue fund is the mission playhouse. The general fund is proposed to. Transfer three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the mission playhouse. At the current proposed funding levels and operations. The mission playhouse can generate sixty-one percent of their proposed operating expenditures with the remaining coming from the general fund. The, the proposed expenditures are based on a scaled down operation. And staff will continue to evaluate options and solutions. For the mission playhouse in the upcoming fiscal year. And the special project fund. Is where resources are transferred from other funds to the special project fund to make one-time equipment purchases. You can see the multiple equipment purchases that are planned in the special project fund. Along with the, along with the funding source for those equipment purchases. And then just to note, um, on a previous. Presentation, the Chevy Tahoe fire utility truck. Was at a higher amount, but the amount for those two vehicles is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So next we'll look at staffing, if you want to, if you can go to slide twenty-four. So total authorized positions in the prior fiscal year was a hundred and ninety-seven. Not all of the positions were fully funded. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the total authorized positions has increased by one for a total of a hundred and ninety-eight. And on the next slide, we'll discuss what's going on with the changes in the proposed positions. Slide twenty-five, please. So for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, there are two additional. New, uh, new positions proposed, one is in the public works department for a maintenance lead worker. And that position will be funded by the wastewater fund. And in community services, there's an administrative assistant position proposed. For two new positions. And then the director position in mission playhouse and the community services director position. Will be consolidated into one position and the mission playhouse director position will be eliminated. With the, um, with the net increase of being. One new position, one new authorized position. Slide twenty-six, please. Moving on into our capital improvement plan, slide twenty-seven, please. So total capital improvements planned for.
Hi Will, it's John, looks like you're muted.
Thanks, John, can you hear me?
We cannot, thank you.
So the total capital improvement. Budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is twenty-one million, four hundred thousand. All of the sources for the capital improvement plan are from special restricted sources. The largest capital improvement plan category for the fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year is in street improvements. At twelve million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Traffic signals at just over two million, sewer improvements at six point three million. And plant improvements in parks, public facilities and bridges. Slide twenty-eight, please. Moving on to discussing the fee schedule, slide twenty-nine, please. So as the city council knows, there was a workshop done for the fee schedule on April first. During the workshop, the city council expressed some concerns over the increases in the planning fees. Staff has reevaluated the planning fees and proposed adjustments to them. These, the, the fees that are proposed are based on the average of the neighboring, neighboring cities. And then the, the fee schedule will be presented to the council along with the budget and CIP. In, in early June. Next slide, please. So next steps, slide thirty-one, please. So the next steps for, for our budget process, so we'll continue the discussion tonight of this. Budget study workshop. Next week will be, the plan is for the city manager and staff to meet with council members individually to discuss the city budget. After those discussions, any changes or updates will be made to the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And the plan is to bring the budget along with the fee schedule. To the city council on June first to conduct a public hearing. And present an item for adoption of the proposed budget, CIP and the schedule of fees. June fifteenth. Is also a date if the budget needs to come back for consideration. And then after the budget is adopted, there are a list of, of items that staff will be addressing. Including developing a financial, uh, comprehensive financial recovery plan. Addressing the shortfall in the mission playhouse along with, um, other items that, uh, that will improve the fiscal, the city's, uh. Fiscal stability. Next slide, please. That concludes the presentation, we can take any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, thank you, Will, uh, for such a detail and very easy to understand the budget. So does any city council member have any factual question for staff to clarify the report? Does he any one interest in? Okay, I see.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, now I just wanted to clarify that we'll have deliberation after this section, right, we're waiting for public comment?
Okay.
Is that true? Public comment on the agenda, but I'm assuming we have, we're saving.
Public comments if we receive anything from the public. So again, this time is for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Mayor, we have not received any public comment.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. So, yeah, I guess the next thing is we gonna have councils deliberation. And city council, I guess, who's gonna read this, the, the report provides a summary of the proposal. Budget and capital improvements plan, CIP for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Revenue is total eighty-one million and one hundred and seventy thousand and expenditures total eighty-eight million and two hundred and twenty, two hundred and two. Thousand, including capital improvements project in the amount of twenty-one million and three hundred and ninety-six and seven hundred. Providing new additional funding for thirty projects. So I guess. Any city council member have question for, for our staff or specific questions?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, first of all, um, thank you, Will, uh, you know, it's kind of painful sometimes going through these numbers. But I do appreciate the level of detail that's been provided. The great news today is that the American Rescue Plan is helping our city as well as other cities. So I'm glad to see that we're getting three point seven five million this year and then another three point seven five million next year. So that's all very exciting. I also want to applaud, uh, public works in particular because clearly they have heard. Council, they have heard the city residents, the street improvements are a high priority. We did twelve million last year and we're doing another twelve point three million this year. So I, I wanted to just really give some, some praise to our public works because unfortunately they don't always get it, especially because of our streets. We're doing catch-up after decades in some cases, so thank you so much for putting that in the plan for this year. I guess, uh, some of the things I wanted to ask is, well, first of all, I'll leave my detailed questions when we have the one-on-ones next week. But just overall, um, in the presentation of the, um, reports that we got, the budget summaries and the. Well, the, the budget summaries includes operating and revenues, there were some inconsistencies of some pages had columns that had the delta, the increases and decreases. Some had the percentage increase or decrease and then the, some others had percentages and dollars, some had none. So I think if we can go through that one more time, especially if you're going to meet with council. You know, we should be having those deltas in every single page and so. You can maybe make those changes, Will. Some, some, some pages have twenty seventeen, eighteen, some don't. I'm not sure if we have to go back that far, but I think having those increase, uh, those, those changes really is helpful. For us as, as a council and also for the public to be able to identify those significant material increases or decreases in dollar amounts or even percentages in that case. So that was my first, um, observation, second observation was. When you talked about the reallocation of the retiree health benefits. At, at first sight, it looks like there's some increases that we've done some significant, significant increases in, in salaries in particular. And that is not the case. And so, so I understand, you know, that the reallocation, but it's, it's kind of these artificial increases across the board for everyone. And so I was hoping maybe there's a way that you can go back to the previous year and reallocate them in the right buckets. Because then you can have a, a proper comparison, but right now it looks like we just, um. Made some huge increases in salaries and benefits and, and those departments, and I don't think that's a fair assessment. That's how it looks like right now, I think, uh, all the departments have done a really good job in trying to control costs. Um, and, and obviously we haven't had any salary increases, um, so, uh, I, I just don't think it's, it's a fair representation. So I think it's important to go back to the previous year and redo that allocation. I completely agree with the philosophy that the retiree benefits should match to the department instead of. This one bucket and of all, I think it was called interdepartmental in the past, so I completely agree with the. Philosophy of doing it by department, but it's just not a, a fair, it's not fair to any of the department to show these artificial increases. So that would be my recommendation. Regarding property tax, um, you mentioned that it remains strong. And so if you can just elaborate or someone elaborate, doesn't have to be you, Will, but when you say strong, you know, there's two things that come to mind. Our property values remain strong during COVID, is my understanding. And that there is no waivers for property tax, so it must be paid and so are people still paying it? Maybe you can elaborate for me, Will or Mark or anyone?
Sure, council member. So, um, you know, with, with property values under Prop thirteen. That, um, they're limited to the amount that they can increase every single year. Um, and then you have increases in property values as, uh, properties are exchanged and sold. And then you have the development within the city that increases property values. So, um, the budgeted increase for property tax related revenue is four percent. And that's kind of been the history that the city has been receiving is about four percent. So, um, when we say strong, that it, it remains consistently, it remains consistent, um, in its growth. Unlike sales tax where sales tax can be very volatile, if sales go down, then, um, the sales tax. Will go down, whereas property taxes is more stable, it's not going to, because of Prop thirteen. It's not going to go down very much during an economic decline and, um. And. And it, and then it will continue to go up, you know, pretty much continues to go up, so when we say it's strong, it's, it's consistent at about four percent. That's, that's what we're budgeting.
Okay, so it's Prop thirteen, it's property values that are remaining high or maybe not high, but at least constant. And property taxes are still being paid regardless of COVID?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then the mission playhouse, um, again, that's, I think, something that we maybe need to, to this, we will, we will be discussing more this summer, but. Those, we've made some huge strides there and, and maybe Rebecca could share a little bit more, I know she's very humble, but she's made, she's really turned it around. If my memory serves me well, you know, we, we, we were starting with like an eight hundred thousand dollar. Shortfall that was being taken from our general fund, our general fund was, was being used to, to cover that expense. And then we did, last year, uh, we had two hundred and fifty thousand shortfall. And then now we're looking at in the future, three hundred and fifty thousand. Can someone just kind of help me with that, make sure I'm, I'm understanding it because that is significant. Within a year to make those type of changes. Can someone share a little bit more or, or do, do, do we need to wait for the summer?
This is, this is Director Perez, yeah, I can, I can address that, so. I think and, and that amount definitely looks positive and, and, um, that is definitely our goal is the three hundred and fifty thousand. But because of, uh, we have not been able to realize true, uh, revenue since our fee increase happened. Um, and so that is, we are anticipating that amount, but there is still some work to be done there and that's what staff will be working on. So the three hundred and fifty thousand has been kind of an earmarked amount for what, what the city would be subsidizing the mission playhouse with, but that is still. A little bit fluid and, and yet to be determined and that's what our discussion will be further with the council. Will, does that sound about right?
Yes, um, you know, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, budgeted, uh, currently proposed, but discussions will be. Ongoing as, uh, we come up with the plan as we move into the next fiscal year.
Mark, I think I saw you wanting to chime in.
Thank you, Councilman Member Munchaka, and, uh, it is Mark Lazarina, City Manager. I would echo everything Will and Rebecca said, I will say that it's artificially low in expenses this year. We're not doing some of the regular maintenance that we would normally do. Council may remember that we closed the facility during August and we have a lot of staff there that do, uh, tons of work on the facility. And so not only do we have staff costs during that month, but we also have expenses related to the parts and services that they do. And then on top of that, we forego revenue for that month and it's sort of. And it's sort of a refreshing and a rehab of the facility. So we've pulled all of those costs out. So it's not a sustainable budget going forward. But as a result of council's discussions over the past year or two about keeping costs at the the Playhouse low, we are doing that as well as the state audits recommendations. We didn't want to present a budget that was presented the day the state audit came out and have, you know, the old numbers of six or eight hundred thousand dollars. So we will be working with the council and with the staff at the Mission Playhouse to come up with a budget that is closer to realistic, but not the six or eight hundred thousand dollars that it once was. And that will be something we work on going forward when we know what our future is going to be as we reopen from COVID.
Regarding, we updated the film permits. And I know I read somewhere, just all cities are experiencing this increase with film permits. Because everything's opening up. Where is that taking place? Is it that revenue for the Mission Playhouse, if it's at the Mission Playhouse? Or is there is there another funding area, maybe economic development that it's going to?
It would actually be both in in two locations. One, it would be in economic development if we're receiving those film permits or or finance for those permits, depending on where we log those. But if they're also renting the Mission Playhouse for actual filming there, then that revenue goes to the Mission Playhouse. So it ends up in two spots.
So how does that control, I mean, when the film permit is submitted? Who's monitoring that to make sure it's going to the right place from an accounting perspective?
From an accounting perspective, if they're just pulling a film permit to film anywhere in the city. So we've had some, you know, in our neighborhoods or next door in the Groyty Building, for example. Those, all of our our fees get logged through our finance department. But those fees that are associated with a filming permit would be allocated by finance to that department. For the rental of the Mission Playhouse, it would be treated like a facility rental, just like somebody else coming and renting the Mission Playhouse. So that gets logged through Mission Playhouse, but eventually by finance into revenue for the Mission Playhouse.
Okay, okay. So for example, all the dance competitions, those aren't considered, even though they were filming, it looked like they were filming. That was not considered a filming permit, that was a Mission Playhouse event. Is that true?
You're correct. All of those were filmed as facility, I mean, I'm sorry, billed as facility rentals. And all of that money was logged in by the Mission Playhouse and then ends up going through finance.
Right. And then lastly, just a general question, since we have a budget and we know monies are coming in, we really don't have an opportunity as a council to really decide that we want to allocate part of the three point seven five for, let's just say, more streets or for, there's there's lots to do. Is is that true? I mean, we have a budget here, we get the money, we're already making the allocation. There's, we would have to have, we would have to take away from some department to use it, let's just say, streets. We want to do more for the streets, we want to do more for the parks. And we don't have that flexibility right now because we're building our cash flows also. Is that true?
I appreciate you asking that question because our budget documents show that money going into our general fund fund balance, half of it this year and half of it next year. And I think Will did a great job of explaining that that's shown in our fund balance. But we have not allocated that yet. So a hundred percent of it is going to fund balance. And that's not going to be the case most likely. We're still waiting for the Treasury Department to issue their regulations for how those funds can be used. And initially, we can use revenue replacement, but we'll have to show that we lost seven and a half million dollars in COVID revenue losses in order to put all of that into our fund balance. So most likely, we will have to either show as other expenses that we've spent responding to the COVID crisis or we will have to spend it on something that is approved under the Treasury Department regulations. So things like a business relief program, continuing the senior meals programs, doing rental relief, those will all likely be allowed. But spending it on paving streets or other things will most likely not be allowed unless we're using our our fund balance money. And that would, as you said, that would draw down on whatever rainy day fund we're able to start to build up. So we are not programming that as part of this budget. And when we have our regulations from the Treasury Department, we'll do a separate discussion with council on how to spend that money. We'll come up with a recommendation and then have a discussion on that.
Okay, yeah, because I think some people get very excited by those numbers, but there are restrictions. It's not just, you know, just open, kind of an open situation. Just like our special funds, I kind of consider that like our special revenue fund. So there will be restrictions, compliance issues. And so we need to kind of pause and and wait for for everything to kind of pass along to each of the cities. And then we can make some decisions. So, okay, well, at this point, for now, this is all I have. But I may have a few more questions after I hear my my colleagues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Munchaka. Any other city council member have questions? I see raised hand by council, council member pool.
Thank you, Mayor Lio. I think I would in general agree with Councilwoman Munchaka's comments. And then in that regard too, with respect to reallocating some of the retiree health expense to the various departments, could the personnel line item on the detailed pages be broken out then into its various components as well? I I do think it's, it would be helpful if we showed it at least one year going back, like or for the current fiscal year, so that we can't compare apples to apples, at least for the from between twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two. But then, you know, even in the budget details pages, like I'm just looking at the city council one on page twenty-nine of the of the budget that's been provided to us, you know, it doesn't, you know, if we could break it broken down between salaries versus retiree health versus, you know, current current council benefits. Because this number here obviously includes a lot of different things that and and it's, I think it's just not clear, you know, how how those expenditures break out.
It's, that's a great question. I think it might be a little misleading on that city council budget because the city council budget is just one funding source and one, one department really. But it's it's less confusing in some of the bigger departments. But taking the page that you've shown, page twenty-nine, you're right, that personnel shows you the roll up of all of those numbers. And then the operations and utilities are after that. But if you go to page thirty, it will give you the detail that rolls up into that summary. So that that is meant to be sort of a snapshot of the budget for that department. And then you get into the details on the next page.
Got it. Health insurances, retirement costs, normal costs. Okay, then, because this actually is then a common point then to some of my other comments, which is, can we provide a note then on on the budget and brief expenditure pages to say, you know, for detail, you know, see next page or see page, whatever it is? Because I think that that is also what I think is maybe still still a little bit confusing or difficult to read if you're just picking up the budget for the first time. I would say the same would be true if we're just looking at, you know, page two in the budget summaries. Because the general fund, you know, it's it's a big number. But obviously, if you unpack it, there's a lot of different, you know, detail there. And you would really have to go to page eight to see what the breakdown of the expenditures are. And then the page fifteen to see the breakdown of the of the revenue sources, including all the different categories, some of which, you know, Councilwoman Munchaka mentioned. So there can be a note and and I, because a lot of these other special revenue funds are their own sort of standalone fund. But then there are others that I think are, you know, are sort of rolled rolled up and 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 can be broken down by themselves. I would say so general fund is one. So even though the detail is there, being able to point to it would be helpful for both the revenue and the expenditure side, you know, which which pages those would be located on. I'd say the same thing as also, as Councilwoman Munchak mentioned too, of the Mission Playhouse. The Development Impact Fund, I think that one in particular, because it's consists of several or a few different types of funds. And I think the detail is on page eighteen for the revenues. And there's, I think, a few places where, you know, the expenditures are actually specified. But I think part of the point I'm trying to make here is that it's not just one big fund that can be used for any purpose. It's actually made up of these sub-funds and, you know, so portion of it can only be used for park and rec. Another portion can only be used for police or fire, you know, another portion for fire, another portion for sanitary sewer and traffic impact. I think it would be helpful to point to those pages just so that if anybody wants the greater detail, they can they can see exactly then. Within that Development Impact Fund, there's actually five different funds that are sort of earmarked separately. And then I think the last, well, two two more questions I had, or actually maybe three. First one is, again, I think on page two, and the internal service funds, is it correct then the that the revenue that those funds are getting, those basically just come from the from the general fund?
A portion of the revenue that the Internal Service Fund receives is from the the general fund. And then a portion is also from the special revenue funds. So the Internal Service Funds are providing services to the other funds. And and then the other funds are reimbursing the Internal Service Fund for those for those costs.
I see, because, yeah, the 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 large, so then. So here's what I think is always confusing, both for us and for members of the public, is that, you know, under a column that says estimated revenue, it looks like the risk management fund is getting four point seven million dollars of revenue. But that's really not the case. I mean, that's, those are really transfers, as I understand it, right? They're they are transfers from other funds, is that correct?
That's correct. They're basically transfers from other funds.
Okay, and then, but then in the, on the next, well, not the next page, but page four in the interfund transfers page, we don't see how those how those interfund transfers are actually, you know, this is meant to show the to and the from of those interfund transfers. And I don't see how four point seven million dollars is transferred to the risk management fund.
So, you know, because because these are internal service funds, they're assumed to, they're generating revenue for the services that they're providing. And so that's why it's not purely a transfer, but but it's it's presented as a as a revenue to the Internal Service Fund. Kind of the the same thing is happening. You know, cash is being sent to the fund and 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 a revenue type item is is being added. But when it's, when it's not in an internal service fund, it's a transfer. And because it's an internal service fund, it's providing services to the other fund. And then therefore, it's being recorded as a revenue.
Right, but it's not as if that's there's money coming in the way you normally think of revenues. The money is not coming in from the outside to the tune of one point four million for the fleet services fund or risk, you know, four point seven million for the for the risk management fund. Correct? I mean, those those monies are being, so in other words, where is that money coming from? And could that be, could that detail be shown on page four? Because to be honest with you, I think of all of these as internal service fund, the the retirement fund is an internal service fund that services the general fund so that we can pay employee retirement, you know, expenses. I, right, isn't that, isn't that effectively the same function?
Yes, you know, you know, somewhat similar function where the retirement fund is, you know, we're we're just using the retirement fund to isolate the the revenue that's coming in from from the from the retirement revenue. It's just one way to account for it. I I would say the the benefit of the Internal Service Fund, that it gives us an opportunity to charge these costs. Because, for example, risk management, that is our general liability and workers' comp cost. So it gives us an opportunity to charge those costs to other funds, not just the general fund. It gives us an opportunity to allocate the services that the general fund is receiving based on, say, number of employees. But there's also employees who are being funded by the special revenue fund. So it allows us to allocate those costs to to the, to not only the general fund, but also the special revenue funds.
I mean, I think I understand what you're saying, but I guess my point is just that where where is that money coming from? You know, when you just look at this on page two, sources and uses, you look all the way across and each for each line item, you know, I think it makes more sense. You say gas tax, okay, you know, one point seven or what is it, one point two million in this current fiscal year, you know, ending, ending fund balance. How much are we expected to get during that year? What what are we expecting to expend out of that fund for the year? And then what the fund balance will be at the end of the year? But you know, the, I don't know, am I, is it, am I the only one who feels like that it's unclear then for when we look at these two internal service funds? How are they actually being funded? Because it's not as if it's revenue coming in from the outside.
If you don't mind, Councilman Pooh, I can ask Julia. Julia, you've worked in a couple of cities. Have you seen this demonstrated more clearly than the way we've done it?
In all the cities that I've worked in, they've always reported it the same way. These are treated as charges, service charges, which are considered revenue. And I believe that's a governmental accounting requirement. However, what I was just thinking was, we can prepare a schedule, a separate schedule that we could put in the budget that shows where those charges are coming from. And that would just clarify, that would be very easy to do.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I would, would it, Julia, would that be something akin to what we see then on page four for the other interfund transfers?
Yeah, we can do something like that for you.
Okay, great. And then the last thing is that on this page four, I think it might be a little bit confusing as to the direction of the transfers. You know, we probably are well aware. But if I, if I can suggest that we don't have a to and a from column, except just for each line item, say, from such and such fund to, you know, whatever fund, however much it is. Because, yeah, it it could, it could, you could be, you know, you could interpret this as saying, okay, general fund transferring to or from, does that make sense that it looks, it it can't actually be interpreted to be the opposite direction of what it of what it's actually meant to, meant to convey. And I don't think there's a need to necessarily have these two columns per se, if it can just be transfers from one place to another place, internal transfers. These are all internal interfund transfers from here to there. And maybe even, you know, for what purpose? You know, what generally, what does it go to do? Capital Improvement Fund, obviously, it's like, you know, infrastructure, it's streets, it's it's sewers, it's all those things. Capital Improvement Fund, obviously, it's like, you know, infrastructure, it's streets, it's, it's sewers, it's all those things. And then if that, and then that kind of a, sort of a general description, that way also members of the public will also understand what those internal transfers are for, and, and these are not, you know, actual revenues coming in, in the door. They do ultimately equate to expenditures that go out the door, I suppose, but, but they don't, it's not as if, you know, I, I think the general fund and, and special fund revenues are where we really look to, at the, for our, for, you know, the cash flow that we need in order to make the organization run. But I think that it could be confusing to, to others to see like, okay, there's all this other, these transfers, and that, and that was a, you know, that was a problem when we used the sort of, I think it was more of a fun-based accounting system and, and budget presentation in the past too. It became difficult to understand, to see the difference between inter-fund transfers and actual, you know, expenditures and, and so forth. So I think maybe, you know, it makes sense internally for the finance department, but it doesn't make sense for, from an outside perspective. Or it's just not as clear from an outside perspective, exactly, you know, what, what, what those, what is going on with those things. And, and so I think that this would make it, I think, perhaps more transparent and then, and therefore easier to understand. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Pooh. Is there any other city council member have comments or questions for our staff? No? Okay.
Well, no one else has any comment. I, I forgot one more. Along the lines of council member who was saying, page seven, it does say, and it does say in the summary that the intergovernmental line item under revenues, the second, it says taxes, inter, intergovernmental revenues. It, it's a significant amount, and the reason it's a significant amount, because it's the American Rescue Plan. But when you start comparing it year to year and then going forward, comparing it year to year, it's going to dramatically, well, first it's going to increase significantly. Then it's going to dramatically decline. And I, I wanted to ask again for transparency purposes, maybe it would be wise to label it as the American Rescue Plan as opposed to burying it into intergovernmental, you know, line item. Because we do have other types of intergovernmental revenue funds that do receive money. But if you don't separate it, that's when it gets very confusing and you'll start asking the questions, well, why, what happened? And if it's clear upfront, and hopefully we don't have another repeat of COVID and no more rescue plans from the federal government. But I think it'll just, it needs a good trail, and so you can follow it, whether you're a council member or you're someone from the public. Just listing that very clearly, I think would be helpful. So that, that would be my recommendation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that can be listed under ARP, American Rescue Plan, and that's easy to do. Vice Mayor Dean, you have a question? Yes.
Yeah, okay, maybe the, my question, it's not really professional, but I just use the my, the com, my own common sense or like just new council member, first of all, for the, like a summary for my, if, if a public guy sees the, like, total revenue, we have the eighty-one million something, and the, and the expenditure, it's eighty-eight million. But looks like this budget for me, I, the, the question is, looks like we already have the seven million dollars, the shortage. Right? So that's a very simple number, but I don't know. It's a, but I, I think I discussed with the, the Mark, it looks like I have some special project, something. For the, also, I, I appreciate the, we have the, like, five years of a project for the, for the, for the, our budget. Yeah, so I, is it possible for our more community, more and easy to understanding? That's I want to see the, this report, I, for me, it's a little bit hard to understand it. What's the regular revenue we receive every year? Like a stably, like a property tax, gas tax, okay? And, and also like if you have a special fund, so what's the, like, special fund, how many years we can get this fund? Okay, and then for the expenditure, I also want to see the generally, what kind of expenditure? The regular, we need to pay like insurance or retirement, whatever. So is it possible can have the, like, just regular revenue, regular, like, expense? And then plus, like, your special, some more, like, highlight more detail, so it's more clear for our community can understanding, even they ask me, I, I, I don't know, really can answer it. So for the, you know why? Because the, for our, the, for the long run, I just wanted to project, okay? That's the, like, for example, we have the, like, a regular revenue, for example, just sixty million. But a way expense, maybe more than sixty million a regular year or less than, that, that's the example, okay? I just, I don't meaning, okay? So there's a regular revenue, regular expense. So then it's a really good picture for us to, even for the council member to watch out. So really, we, we balance the budget or not? For the spe, special, the revenue. So maybe you're dedicated, say, this special revenue, revenues for the, the street paving or business help or senior meal. So that's like a short term, the revenue, short term, the expense. So maybe it's a more help to community to more understanding. Yeah, so that's my comments.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't see, Councilmember Hampton, you have questions or comments?
No questions, just a comment that I appreciate the detail and the ever improving clarity of the budget. I'll reserve my comments for the one-on-one meeting, and then once we get back to meeting as a council again, I'm sure I'll have more. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate all the hard work from the staff. I have the same question with this risk management fund, you know, because it's increased twenty-five percent from last year as one million more. But I guess the, is the liability insurance and workers' comes increase? But is it because the JPIA insurance rate increase? Or what, what costs this one million dollars more this year, or yeah, this coming year?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. That, that's, that's partly it. It's also really an increase in exposures. And it's really our claims history that does drive our premiums. And so that's something that we are continuously working on to address. It is a very difficult task to rein in, especially when we talk about the workers' comp side of it. Because there are, there just are a lot of provisions that are available to employees. And so the claims are, you know, we have a high volume of claims. I don't want to say particularly for us, but in general, local governments will have a high volume of claims, especially on the sworn side. And the vast majority of those claims are going to be accepted on a presumption. And so it's very hard to mitigate for that. In terms of the increases this year, just so you have the information, the workers' comp did increase by, I forget the percentage, but it may have been twenty percent. And the other fund increased by eleven percent. And what that really means is the JPIA actually buffers the increases every year. So they, they generally buffer the increases by minus ten percent, up to twenty percent. So if you have a really good performing year, the most that they will discount your premium is ten percent. If you have a really bad year, the most that they will tack on to your premium is twenty percent. For one of our funds, I believe it was a general liability, it actually went up by thirty-one percent. So you can actually see the buffering from the pool being in the JPIA. Obviously, we want to be on the low end of that and in the negative part of that, up at minus ten percent. And that's what we're actively working to, to achieve on a year, year-to-year basis.
So, but one question is, you know, last year we had a five hundred thousand settlement. But for this coming year, twenty, one twenty-two, we don't have that, right? We didn't budget at a five hundred thousand settlements. So, but at, at the same time, we see the increase of these liabilities and insurance. How do you? And I can understand why it's so hard to get it right. But, okay, the, the four point seven, you know, and, and it's, well, eighty-five percent funded by general fund. And what about the, the other fifteen percent? Where are we going to pay that fifteen percent of the four point seven million?
Yes, Mayor, so these costs are allocated out based on some cost driver. And so eighty-five percent of the cost is paid for by the general fund. And the remaining fifteen percent will be, will be, be, be paid by some special revenue fund. Could be gas tax, could be, could be measure R.
Okay, well, that's another thing, you know, gas tax is not for, it's a restricted funding, so it's not for anything you want to use it. For instance, I just have a question for, you know, a purchase of, it's, it's a brush chipper and bucket lift truck. Two hundred and twelve thousand. So it's from gas tax fund, but however, a gas tax fund is only allowed for street or road related equipments. You know, you wouldn't want to buy components for paving the streets, I, I, I think it's allowed, but you know, the, the brush chipper, I'm not sure, because I look at all the items allowed by the gas tax. And this, this was published by the State Controller Office, you know, they list all the details, items that, you know, can use the gas tax. But I didn't see anything that we can use the gas tax fund, so.
Thank you, Mayor Liao. That's a great question. We try to maximize those funds as much as possible. And one of the allowed uses is for maintaining our street tree canopy. So it can only be used for those trees that we trim that are on the streets, so that, that's how we allocate the brush chipper for that, or the majority of it. And we do use that chipper and the, the lift truck to do things like maintaining our signals, which is another allowed use, and the street signs and those kinds of things. So the chipper and the, the bucket truck are both used on our streets and are allowed by gas tax. And I'll tell you that Linda Tang is a stickler for the way that we allocate all of those funds. And she's a guru for how we can use those and would not let us use those funds for a way that they wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, well, I guess I can trust Linda.
Well, good evening, council member. This is Linda Tang, Assistant Finance Director. I certainly want to just add that we do get audited by gas tax auditors. The, and that's just probably about three, four years ago, that's when they kind of started to do a long-range, ten-year audit. And we certainly had no findings there, and I come there on an annual basis. We do have this gas tax auditor here to look at our books and to validate all of our expenditures, just to give you a level of comfort.
Thank you, Linda. You always do a great job. One question is, I guess, well, maybe is for, well, again, it's the Prop eight money, you know, for so many years, I don't know, maybe ten, fifteen years. We always exchange the Prop eight money to other cities, for instance, the City of Industry, because they have the foothill transit terminal, so they need the funding. But that's transportation. So, you know, even though we exchange it, but now you said, well, we can use it for general fund or it was allocated or to community services. So I would, I, I would suggest that, you know, because this is part of the transportation funding, maybe we should go Prop eight under transportation. That's how I feel.
Yes, Mayor, so, you know, we do exchange the portion of Prop eight that we don't, that we don't use or unrestricted money at a seventy-five cents on the dollar. And then we do use a portion of Prop eight for our dial ride. So that's kind of like, you know, I guess we were categorizing dial ride under community services. And I guess it could kind of be one of those transportation as well.
Well, I, I would agree, you know, that, right, it's part of the, you know, community services, but it's, it should be under transportation because it's, all the fundings, it's, it's restricted to transportation. Okay, well, last question is about the, we should play house, and, you know, we're going to do something about it. And of course, we're going to have more detailed discussions, how we're going to do it. And fortunately, I, I have a chance to talk to one of the company, it's called the Tung's Send Public Affairs. And they recommend two grants available. So, well, you know, I, I, I think our, our director, Perez, already contacted them. And a couple, one of us is California Arts Council, and the other one is National Endowment for the Arts. So there are grants available, but also this company also mentioned, you know, there are grants available under libraries and museums. So, you know, we can go through those categories, maybe can find some funding opportunities. So, yeah. All right, so I think that's all for tonight's discussion. Mark, are you going to conclude this or, or Will?
Thank you, Mayor Liao and members of the council. I appreciate the discussion. And as you mentioned at the beginning, as Will mentioned in his presentation, we'll be doing one-on-ones with the council, which we found to be very helpful. And then we'll have at least one more public hearing for the community to be able to be involved. And we'll have a presentation for the full council in June and hopefully get the budget adopted at our June first council meeting.
Okay, all right. So, well, adjourned tonight's meeting till Tuesday, May fourth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty for the regular city council meeting. So thank you, everyone, for attending this study section, and have a good night. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.